I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do audio windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINYS. Just call. Thank you.
So good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 6th, 2017 meeting of the Pembroke Board of Selectmen. We'll start the meeting off with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before going to the announcements right off the bat, we'll have our town memorial committee talk to us about the upcoming Veterans Day activity.
Good evening. Good evening. Veterans Day is on the 11th. We've had many questions about it being on the 10th because apparently the holiday is being celebrated on the 10th, but we are celebrating on the 11th. That's when the veterans want it, and we will stick with that. So we're at the middle school, 11 o'clock, on 11:11. And we hope to see you all there. We have the chorus will be there, and the veterans will be there, refreshments from the Legion, and we look forward to honoring our veterans. So we have our Veterans Agent, Renee Kirwin, Rob and Renee Kirwin. I don't even know how she looks. Was it Rob and her? She read the Governor's Proclamation.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a proclamation. Whereas since the Commonwealth's colonial days, thousands of men and women have served our country in defense of freedom and liberty, and whereas on November 11th, 1918, Armistice was signed in the forests of Compania by the Allied nations and Germany, ending World War I, the war to end all wars. After four years of conflict, and whereas since that day, every November, people from around the nation have gathered to honor our veterans. And whereas currently, there are approximately 388,000 veterans living in Massachusetts, and whereas today, we are reminded of the great sacrifices and contributions our veterans have made to our country. And whereas we honor and salute those who served our country throughout the generations of honor, patriotism, and courage, and whereas it is appropriate that all Massachusetts citizens remember the bravery of those who served their country, so that their dedication and sacrifices serve as a reminder of the cost of our freedom. Now, therefore, I, Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do here proclaim Saturday, November 11th, 2017, to be Veterans Day, and urge all citizens of the Commonwealth to take cognizance of this event and participate finnally in its observance, given at the Executive Chamber in Boston, the first day of November in the year 2017, ahead of the Independence of the United States of America, the 241st. Vice Excellency Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Baker, will you be able to say a few words?
Sure.
Okay.
Glad to.
Thank you.
I just want to say thanks to both of you because of all of the, every year.
That's our pleasure.
Do the same thing.
Thanks. Good job.
Please be advised that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on podcast government access, Channel 15, and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. If one that's made an open session will be recorded. Need a vote to discontinue the use of AccuVote system and authorize use of the new digital equipment. And we have our town clerk here. Do you want to say anything about that?
No, I just, I just need a vote that where we have changed voting machines to do away with the AccuVote, and now that we're on the new voting image machines. So I just need a vote of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to discontinue the use of the AccuVote voting tabulating system and authorize the use of the ImageCast digital scan voter tabulator.
There's a new one out. How's that one? This guy. Okay. Yeah. You want to do the honors?
Mr. Chairman, I would move pursuant to general laws, Chapter 54, Section 34, that the board confirm that it's September 19th, 2016, and October 3rd, 2016, votes to authorize inclusion on the warrant for the October 18th, 2016, special town meeting of the transfer of free cash for the purpose of purchasing new voting equipment. Clarify that such vote was intended to authorize and direct the town clerk to purchase and utilize new voting equipment specifically called ImageCast at future elections, and to discontinue use of AccuVote voting equipment at all such future elections, and further to direct the town clerk to provide the State Elections Division with notice of this vote.
Any questions or comments? Hearing them all, those in favor.
Aye.
Anybody who voted? Three yes, three no.
Thank you.
In the discussion on the municipal program, we have an aggregation. Did you get some information?
Yes, sir. Sorry that we're missing the two members of the board, but I guess I'll go ahead with my presentation, and I'll have a separate meeting with those two gentlemen ahead of future notice. So I just want to explain the municipal aggregation program that was voted on by town meetings some time ago, and you've had a presentation coming in by Colonial Power. Nick's and Caloetan have been part of conference calls with Colonial Power and the other communities that are in the National Grid program, as well as conference call included two communities that are in the Eversource district, which is, which will be Kingston and the town of Plymouth. So anyway, so in your packet, there's a section that's devoted to the aggregation program, and I have a cover memo that deals with all the exhibits, and I want to run through these exhibits in the order that they're on the memory unit that deals with the exhibits. So the first exhibit is a typical electric bill, and we're using my electric bill from Plymouth as an example of how the program works. Now, if you look at that, the first exhibit, the Eversource bill, you'll see that the bill itself is divided into two parts. You have, and this will be in the right column, it says total charges for electricity, and you see supplier charges, and you see delivery charges. The municipal aggregation program deals strictly with the supplier charge, and that's the only one that's going to be affected. So now, we're going to look at a typical electric bill and how the savings is going to take place, and I got the kilowatt usage per month, you know, from my electric bill as an example. Now, the next exhibit is a chart that is furnished by Colonial Power to deal with the fluctuation of rates. National Grid and Eversource in this area are allowed to change their rates every six months, from November to April, and April to October. And these, this chart shows the fluctuation of rates every six months, and you can see, especially the last several years, there have been some serious spikes to, you know, .16 kilowatt hours all the way down to .80, and back up, and, you know, up and down, up and down. And the aggregation program is supposed to mitigate that by having the same rate for any period of time. The next exhibit is a similar chart dealing with the rates, just, and this was done by Casey in our office. The chart down at the bottom just shows how much rates go up and down every six months. So any questions at this point?
So they've gone at a high in one second period, 96.6%?
Yeah, almost double. Right. For a six-month period. And then it goes down 50%, 40%, 50%, whatever, and back up again. So now, the next exhibit is a chart that is furnished by Colonial Power when it comes time for the town to make the decision as to whether they want to join the program. And this would have been the final fixed price for the town of Pembroke, and there were bidders, Constellation Energy, Nextra, Public Power, and Verdi. Now, if you look up in the upper right-hand corner, under Basic Service, you see the rate that a National Grid is going to charge Pembroke for the next six months is .1263. 12673, excuse me. All right? That's what we in Pembroke are going to be charged for the next six months. Now, what I have underlined is what Nick and I, you know, were thinking would have been the best rate had we opt into the program, and that would have been a one-year deal from this November to the end of October 2018, and that rate for one year would have been Nextra at .10877. Okay? So hypothetically, if we had joined the program and we picked that rate for that amount of time, that's what we would have recommended to the board of selectmen. Now, let's go to the next exhibit, which is a chart showing my electric usage for one year, and I have total electric in my condo, so everything that I have is all electric. Heating, air conditioning, utilities, you know, stove, the whole enchilada. So, so for the first six months, from May until October, this is my kilowatt usage and times the rate that Pembroke had for the first six months. I'm using Pembroke, I'm using my electric usage with Pembroke rates. So that would have been for the first six months, Pembroke people were paying 09432. And for the supplier costs for that six months, my cost would have been $300. Now, starting November 1st, people in Pembroke are paying that higher rate now, at .12673. And based on last year's winter usage by me, that would have been over $1,700 that I would have spent in supplier costs. So for the year, total kilowatt hours used for a 12-month period, I would have paid over $2,000 in supplier costs. All right? Now, if we choose to go with the municipal aggregation program, we're going to have the same rate for the 12-month period, that .10877. And if you use my electric usage for each of the six-months period, the first six months, because the rate was lower, I would have paid $46 more for the six-month period. For the second six-month period with the higher rate, and we keep the Colonial Power rate the same at .10877, I would have saved $244 for that six-month period. So for the entire year, I would have saved a little under $200 for the 12-month period. So that's how, that's how it works. Any questions there?
Are they all the same? All these companies are the same, or is that how they go?
Well, no, we would have picked the best deal. You know, Nick and I would have come to you with that chart that was furnished by Colonial Power, and we said, this is the best deal that we would recommend for a one-year period at this flat rate, and this is what you would save. And so, you know, I would urge you guys to go home and look at your electric bills and see the same methodology, just to see how it would work.
May I make a comment on that? I did look at my bill, and if I use the .10877 rate, which is on this proposal, I just happened to have a contract with another company moving away from National Grid, and there's a slight difference in the rate that I'm going to pay for the next year. It's a one-year deal for me. And if I use the same number of kilowatt hours and compare the rate that I currently have versus the proposed rate of .10877, I would only save 10 cents a month. So the fact that I'm in the program that I'm in for one year, I would not be interested in this, but when the year is up, I would be interested, and I know I can join at any time. So I would not sign up, but only because it's not financially the right thing to do. Because if I opt out earlier, the plan that I have, I'd pay a fee for doing it. So there's no point in doing it. But that's an excellent rate, the one that is being proposed.
So now, let me show you how it actually works if a community decides to join the, a plan. So the first thing everybody gets is you get an envelope, which is the exhibit after the, my, the chart regarding, you know, my electric rate. So you get an envelope.
So we send all our bills to you?
So you get an envelope that looks like this, because Plymouth opted into the program. And so everybody in Plymouth, every resident got an envelope, and this is what the envelope looks like. You know, it says official town business, and da-da-da-da. Then in it.
Exhibit.
Oh, that's my original? Okay. Then in that envelope, you get this two-page letter, this eight-and-a-half-by-14 letter that explains the program. All right? And then in that letter, in that envelope, you get another envelope, self-addressed envelope with a card. Now, I don't have those two examples because I sent my card in. So for everybody in Plymouth, if you didn't want to be part of the program, you had to send your card in. If you didn't send your card in, you're automatically in the program, whether you know it or not, or likely not.
That's different than not Pembroke.
It'll be that way for Pembroke, if that is the plan. If you folks chose, that's why I'm explaining all this to you, because, you know, now that I've gone through the drill twice, you know, Colonial Power, and have gone through the drill myself personally in Plymouth, that's exactly what would happen.
So just the last time we spoke at this, we, it was mentioned that we needed to opt in, isn't it? So that's not the case.
Exactly, that's exactly the answer.
Make that clear for everybody.
Right. So that's the thing, that, you know, we have a couple of employees that live in Plymouth, that work here, they didn't send their card in, they were in the program. So now we're going to track their electric bills, see how it works. I sent my card in and opted out, I was just curious, and then the other folks didn't send theirs in, you know, because people would be confused about getting that letter and the information that was in there, not knowing that you're automatically in if you don't send that self-addressed envelope to New Orleans, is where I had to send it, you know, and that's what, that would be the case. So, so that's how it works. That's how that plan works. Now, if you, if you're in Plymouth or any other community that's in, and you've already, either you sent your card in and opted out, or you didn't send it in and you're automatically in, you can go on the website, and in this case, it's www.colonialpower/pembroke, and it would be, if we ended up in the program, it would be colonialpower/pembroke. And you can go online, and the last exhibit that I have is an online forum in which you can opt in or out. And you can opt in anytime, you can opt out anytime. There's probably about a month or so lag, so you would probably be in the program for a couple of months, or out of the program for a couple of months if you decide to opt in or out. So that's pretty much how the plan works. I know Mr. Matherson is the president of Plymouth, did you opt in or out?
In.
There you go. So he's in the program.
Because I'm Scott.
Huh?
Because I'm a Scott. I cost less.
So anyway, that's how the program works, and I, and like I said, having gone through the drill the last couple of months, on behalf of the board, Nick Jrue and I, I wanted to take this time to explain for 10, 15 minutes what we've learned about the plan, and I can explain the plan in English.
Well, I'm sure that after you look over all these rates from all these other, you know, people that are selling, selling the electricity or whatever, you're going to pick the cheapest over the longest period of time, I would imagine, that's what you're going to do. But how does the public know that? So how would, how would I know that? Because this gives me, this gives me the rate that they're offering, and I know what rate I have from my electric company. So how do we, how do I know what all of those other ones are? Is it something that comes to everybody so they know that you picked the right one?
No.
You know, we go to the municipality?
Well, yeah, I mean, what happened is, you know, we were on a conference call with, you know, 10 other towns, and Plymouth and Kingston were on that same conference call, although they had Eversource and we had National Grid. I, I thought when we were done with the conference call that Plymouth wasn't going to join the program at that time. And then all of a sudden, little did I know, about a month later, they're in the program. You know, and I'm supposed, you know, I'm trying to stay abreast of what's going on in the place where I live and the place that I work for, and next thing you know, I got this envelope in the mail with this information. You know, fortunately, I knew what it was all about, you know, so I could make what I considered a, you know, an intelligent decision, but if you weren't paying attention or didn't know the program, you'd probably pitched the thing.
So most of us only, that the more towns that join it, the less rate you're probably going to get.
Well, yes and no. You know, and, and Nick had another commitment tonight, and what we've learned is that in a lot of instances, it's almost better to be on your own than it is to be with other towns. There wasn't safety in numbers. I mean, you would look, they would give you two charts. They would give you one that included all the towns that would be in National Grid that were part of this go-around, or they would give you a chart that would just be Pembroke by itself. And a lot of times, it was almost better. I mean, in the case of Kingston and Plymouth, it was better, Plymouth got a better rate by themselves than they would have if they had Kingston with them. It's just the way it worked out.
That's the question I have. Plymouth's rate is less than what they're quoting in Pembroke. What goes into that? Why, why can't we get that rate?
It has to do with whether or not, you know, A, the company itself, and whether or not there's going to be a charge, and I can't remember what the charge is going to be, I think it's, it's not a transmission charge, there was another charge that may, may come down the pipe in six months, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll get that for you, but there was something that, you know, that it's not all apples and apples. You know, it depends on your company itself and, and who else you're in with. And you're right, yeah, evidently, you know, people saw that rate and they jumped on it.
So this is something that we needed you or somebody here to always be looking at this.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, you know, and, but I, you know, now that, you know, Nick and I got a really good handle on how the thing works, and the fact that I've seen it up, you know, firsthand now, by getting the thing in the mail and, and talking with, you know, other folks that, you know, opted in or opted out, you know, we're going to pay attention to their electric bills as they get it, because, you know, I think one of our employees is, you know, going to hit a couple of old bills and, and track it, see how it goes. I was able to just use my own, my bill and do the comparison, so.
Is there a reason that you're, you have such a large differential, almost $200 a year, and you're all electric, and Lou is 10 cents a month or $1.20 a year, only spend it all at one place? But is it because he doesn't have a large electric bill to start with?
No, he's got a third, he's got a third-party supplier, and you guys have gotten robo-calls, I'm sure, at home, dealing with somebody trying to sell you an electric rate. I know I've gotten a couple at home, and I'm sure you've gotten too, and Lou jumped on it and got a rate.
Yeah, I can, the other thing too, I have between my bill and Ed's, Ed is all electric, including heat.
Right.
So his kilowatt hour usage is higher than mine because I pay a separate bill for gas. So my kilowatts used is 400 kilowatts a month, which is not a lot.
And that's why I suggest you, you look at your electric bill, because your electric bill will show 12 months' worth of history, and you can do the math and figure out what, you know, what you're going to do, and, you know, if it looks like it's a good deal. The one, like I said, the one thing that is different about the weight is that you're automatically in unless you opt out. So.
And I think Dan's question about that, should we decide to go with this program town-wide, is going to be a major issue for this board to figure out how we're going to explain this to the public, even if it's just that one point, that when you get this in the mail, what you have to do with it, because you're automatically in if you throw it in the waste basket.
Well, the thing is, we have had numerous discussions, and this is a town meeting vote. This is not a board selectmen's vote to implement the program. The program's in place through town meeting vote, it's just when we
It's just when we pull the trigger on a certain rate.
Right.
It's in this board's purview. But one of the things though, as far as communication, that I think Lou started to allude to that I'd expand on, is a lot of people use electronic billing and don't get paper, paper bills anymore. So if they do get a letter from, from the utility, they, they might tend to ignore it. So, you know, this is not a bill. This is something on the front.
And that's right. And, and the person that I talked to, that I've been talking to, she pays her bill electronically. So, but you can go online and get a copy of your bill. You know, and so that's what she's going to do. But, you know, we'll track her bill to see how that operates. So, but yeah, I would suggest you just look, get one of your own bills. You know, you may use more electricity than I do. I mean, even though I'm all-electric, but I'm one person, you know. So.
What's the date we need a decision on this?
Oh, no. This is a move and target. We can do it anytime.
Okay, so it's not a, a date certain that we have to, have to choose?
No. No, we've already, Nick and I have already been, uh, two situations where we could have come to you folks. One was back in July. Another one was at the end of September. And we both didn't think that we were ready to give you guys a recommendation. And by then, we really got a good handle on how the whole thing operates. And we can explain to the general public how, how the system operates. So, but we, anytime, anytime. You know, all I got to do is call Colonial Power and say, hey, can you get us some new rates?
Can we start that off with municipal and do that first?
We already have, we, Nick and I already have a contract with Constellation Energy. And we got like an eight, you know, ours is like .8 something. It's really low. And we got a three-year deal. But that's just from municipal facilities, you know. Okay?
Good. Definitely something to think about. Probably notifying the public also.
Well, I'll keep, you know, I'll keep you guys posted now because, you know, we'll be dealing with Colonial Power. And we will have conference calls in which we will get one of these guys every time. And if, you know, if I want to give you an update every month about what the rate could be, we'd have to do that.
Anybody else have any other questions on that? Any none, then we'll go on to a discussion of the mission, composition, number of members for the capitol building on the study committee. And I would assume that you're going to take that over here.
Well, this here was, this was put on today from a, from a town administrator. Did you ask for, for clarification on this? To put it on the warrant? Is that where that came from?
It just needs to be clarified so we can recruit. It doesn't have to be this week. It can just be for the discussion or, you know, pushed to another week. Can't recruit until you know how many, that's all.
Okay, well, that discussion would, um, what I would like to see is information from the town accountant especially, who he believes will be most beneficial on this, on that committee. Of course, your input, Ed, is always expected and needed. And as far as the board of selectmen, we've all talked to people around town. Know that there are people interested in joining this. Members of the advisory committee. A member of the DPW has expressed an interest. So what other members of the school committee, even though they're not directly part of these particular building projects, but if we form a committee, the school committee is such a large portion of the town's budget that they should be represented and involved as well. So if we have a committee of, to put a number on it, seven people, I think that's a good starting target. And, you know, if we need to expand a little bit, we could. But I wouldn't want to begin with anyone any more than seven unless you folks have a different idea.
I think I would agree on seven. And I think the list that you just went through would be a good representative group of people. I didn't know whether we would need anyone from planning or the assessors or.
But I would, I would, see, every major, every major board committee, especially ones within town hall, should have a say in this. Everyone's input, whether you're on the committee or not, is always welcome and can be put to use. So I just want to have a good representative, representation of everyone that will be affected by this. And also, I want the people that, that are willing and able to make a contribution as far as the financial aspect of this. And that, that's what this is. We've already done the need studies. We're just trying to find ways to get funding for it other than a straight proposition to an annual override. We want to supplement a direct taxpayer burden where we can. And that's what, that's what this will be. This will be around, I see it starting off as a round table of, of ideas. And then maybe solidifying in the next month or two into solid proposals for, for town meeting.
Yeah, I would agree because if, if you accepted your suggestion of who's going to be on it and we agreed on that every time you have a meeting that does not preclude anyone else from coming. And if they had good ideas, I'm sure we're going to want to hear from them.
Absolutely.
So I think, yeah, I would, I would, I would agree, Dan. I think that's a good representation.
So I have six here that we've talked about. And so we need one other to make the seven. We have police, fire, DPW, advisory, selectmen, and school. The planning board. And planning. So that would be seven.
Hey, no matter what department you leave out, somebody's going to be unhappy.
Yeah, well, seven, it could creep up to nine. But, but I think once the committee's formed, if there's, if there's people knocking at the door wanting to join the committee, that's a good thing as long as we keep it manageable. I would say no more than nine if, if we get, if we get the interest. But if we keep it at seven so that we won't have trouble getting a forum like we've, we've done with other committees still. So it's a good place to start.
So can I make a suggestion that we do the seven that you put on there? The two alternates? And we don't know who those two alternates could be. You could actually pick them once you get to seven. So if we leave two alternates open, there'd be two openings for two other groups. Then you may say, you know, I think we, we could use an alternate from Mr. Plath or we could use an alternate from someplace else.
That's an excellent idea, though. I would, they're there and we'll know that if someone is an alternate and shows up to meetings, then, you know, maybe we could expand the board and give them a seat at the table.
Well, if somebody else doesn't make it, the alternate could fill in for a vote. Get into that discussion, isn't it?
Right. And, and if we leave it as the, the departments can choose their representative, either a vote of the board or committee or the choice of the chairman. I think that's a good way to do it.
Well, that, um, yeah, I can't really make a motion, but if I did, that would say.
Would you like me to read, put me ahead?
I would, I would say that, that we would have one number from police, one from fire, one from DPW, one from advisory, one from selectmen, one from the school, one from the planning board, and two alternates to be determined.
I would suggest somebody from the community center committee.
Fine, so that could be under the two alternates.
They're going to have more of a say because, yeah, they, I would, I would think that they're going to come before the board and eventually the town meeting with a proposal for this community center. So maybe in, you know, instead of the planning board. I mean, from a staff standpoint, you know, Mr. Buckley and myself and Kathleen and Kathy Smith will be available as far as research or, you know, non-voting staff people. I mean, so that, you know, we don't have to worry about that part.
So you suggest we make the committee nine?
Well, I, I wouldn't want to exclude the community center committee.
So we've already made, we've already named eight. And the ninth could be a member of the general public?
Sure, we could do that.
Have we had anyone express interest to tell me?
No, some folks have wanted more information. That's why this is very helpful.
Okay. I mean, we don't have a mission statement other than the, the broad brush of what we're trying to accomplish. So maybe.
You gave some great language earlier when you were talking. We'll take it and we'll make it.
All right, thank you. So. So make a motion to create a nine-member committee. The members to be seated from the police department, the fire department, the DPW, the planning department, board of selectmen, school committee, advisory committee, I forgot to say them, the community center study committee, and one general member of the public. Do you have that's my motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? Any none, or all of the favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So we have the numbers. And if there are any discussion at all about the mission, what the board is going to do.
I think if, as Sabrina alluded to a moment ago, if you could take the discussion that we've had here today and consolidate it and boil it down to a draft.
Yep.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Sabrina.
So we would address that at another meeting?
Hopefully next we do.
Yeah.
Right, right. We, we need interest. We need, we need the folks who want to join.
Yep.
That's really, that's really where the focus needs to be, with those people talking about the real.
You're going to have to get cracking because it is November.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so. And you have holidays, so you're going to have short weeks and all that stuff. Yeah, we'll make, we'll have a mission statement for you. We'll solicit at least, you know, representative from those people that you suggested that, that you part of the committee now.
Right. And, you know, one of the good things is during these need studies for the police, fire, and DPW, those folks have been looking at these ideas and, and thinking about it already. So bringing, bringing them together with some, some fresh ideas from advisory, town accountants, I think we can hit the ground running with thoughts that have already been had and information that's already been gathered. Folks just need to gather more.
Sounds good. Okay. We need to have a vote to accept the minutes of October 30th.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board accept the selectmen's minutes of October 30th, 2017, as written.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Any none, or the favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The old business.
Mr. Chairman, I had two items I wanted to ask. One is we briefly covered the community center. And if we have a committee and who's on the committee and what's going on with the committee, we haven't had an update.
I think you're planning on having one next Monday night.
Excellent. Thank you for that fast action, Mr. Thorne. My second question, I guess I will address to the town administrator as well. Can we have an update on the solar farm?
Absolutely. Do you want to add?
If you have one to add.
We don't have a target date for when they connect to the grid. But I'll see if I can get Mr. Dressing or who's our contact person with Onyx to see if he can firm up a date when it'll be connected to the grid.
Now, I have to admit that I don't have any knowledge on what's involved with connecting to the grid. But it seems like we've been waiting for that to happen for quite a while. And that's the reason why I bring it up. We'd all like to have that solar farm active. And I don't really know why it cannot be. Thank you. If you could find out any more information, I'd appreciate that.
Any others have anything else?
I've read some old news. It's just a day old, but it's news nonetheless. The folks along Water Street in the North River, the neighborhood group that supposedly, 40B, had a meeting yesterday that Sabrina and I attended. And Charlie attended it as well. And they are still very deeply committed to our position as a 40B project guest in the town. And they were very complimentary towards the town's efforts to, you know, show that in 2005, it was declared as an unfit site for a 40B. And nothing has changed except there's perhaps more traffic. And we believe that it should be considered not a, a good site for a 40B some 12 years later. So they are fundraising. They have an attorney, Dennis Murphy, who is a very good and capable attorney and a 40B specialist. And we're going to be, and I think that it's for the long run to oppose any development in Water Street.
If I wasn't out of time, I would have made it myself.
Yeah, it was held at Chapman's house, which is a beautiful yacht that looks out over the North River. It would be a shame to have condos separating them from the view.
Yeah. I think the, the whole board of selectmen share your opinion and the neighborhoods. We need to fight this 40B from that area. The development is not suitable for that street, for that area, for that avenue.
Yeah, I'd just like to add for anyone who's watching that the town has put together a very extensive report that was sent to the housing authority with all of the arguments why that this project would be detrimental to the neighborhood and to the town. A very strong, comprehensive report. And we have not heard back yet. So hopefully we will. And they will see the merit of what was represented in that report.
Very good. I do have one thing that I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board. And I made copies of the information that I received back in the first part of October. I think I advised the board. We sent a letter to Brockton, which we have never heard back from. But just recently, last week, I was at a, at an emery commissioner's meeting, annual meeting in Sandwich, Mass, which all the wardens and the people from the Division of Marine Fisheries and Noah and all the rest of the.
and Noah and all the rest of the people from offshore, that do watch the offshore ships and all the rest of the stuff, were all present down there. It was a full day-long meeting, from nine o'clock in the morning right till three-thirty in the afternoon, where we went on a walking field trip to observe all of the Heron runs and stuff that they have down in Sandwich. It was, it was pretty good. Also, they made a report there that the only river stream that beat Pembroke this year was the Charles River, which is a huge system up in Boston. There was three towns out of the whole state that had an increase in fish this year, and the rest of the state went down. So they were quite concerned about that, but they were also very happy that Pembroke was, was one of the towns that we went up in. And to beat Waynes, not to say to beat them, but it all depends on how many fish, you know, come up or whatever, but to have more fish than Waynes had in their run this year is, is really great, and we topped out at three hundred and something thousand fish this year, where I believe Kingston probably has like seven or eight thousand. So they don't have the bigger system as we do, that's for sure, but in any event, our amount of fish that came up was just astronomical from what it's been in the past, and they took out the counter, it counts the fish, before the last run of fish came up, and we're guesstimating that fifty or sixty thousand more fish came up after they pulled the count. So that's, that's quite a big amount of fish that came up. That's the good part of it. The bad part of it is that Brockton hasn't, hasn't taken care of it. They have a dam situation down there where they divert water from Pembroke Furnace Pond to Silver Lake, and we've been after them for the last five years to fix that, so much so that some of our own guys went out and bought nets and put it across the fishway down there so that the fish wouldn't get entrapped in yet during the migration in the fall with the little fish. We can only think that the bigger fish are gonna go up the natural way and not towards the flume, but we don't know how they get in there, but in the first part of October, we received information, I actually got a, got a message from the Division Marine Fisheries indicating that there was a fish kill in Silver Lake, and they were sending people from the Division Marine Fisheries down to Silver Lake to investigate it. I do have the investigative report that's here, a copy of it, and I also have a copy of the email that was sent from Alex Manfield, who is, he is the ecology program director for the Jones River watershed, which backs up to Silver Lake. And just to, just to read this quick thing, it says, "I Pembroke and North River advocates", some of you probably know about this already, but just in case that you don't, "several thousand river herring were recently found dead in Silver Lake. Brockton's dam and overuse of the water prevent herring from getting into Silver Lake from the Jones River. This means that the dead fish are yours, i.e. we were diverted over from Furnace Pond." The, the amount of work you have all been doing, putting into the fisheries restoration at Pembroke and the whole North River system has been truly remarkable. It's really heartbreaking to see this absolutely unnecessary destruction of fish. Watersheds are linked in really unfortunate ways, and see the attached Division Marine Fisheries describing the incident, and, and I do have a copy here that I'll give Sabrina so she can post it on her website, or whatever, but it indicates that, that they were either juvenile or last year's juvenile fish that got trapped there, and there was over two thousand fish, they said approximately two thousand five hundred fish that were up on the banks that evidently got caught there from the water lowering, so it, it appeared that they were trying to head towards the Jones River for an exit, and then what they, they draw the water down so low in Silver Lake that evidently they got trapped in that area down there and weren't able to make it out, so, so they died. But that just goes to show that, that these fish are going there from Pembroke, and also if, if they're not diverting during the times that we're watching everything down there, I, I just can't understand how they get there, because the juvenile fish, we put the nets across to make sure that the juveniles don't go in there, because Brockton refuses to do it. I understand that, that there's some discussion out there now, but nobody from Brockton really got a hold of the Division Marine Fisheries or Pembroke Fisheries to talk about anything to do with, with helping the matter out down there, so. And it is kinda disheartening that, that the guys do a lot of work in order to bring the fish back, and then they just go right through that tube in the Silver Lake, and that's, that's the end of it, they never come back, so. I don't know whether another letter is in, is, is gonna help, because they haven't, they haven't answered the last one, and I don't, I don't know where to go from here, call town council, and talk to town council about taking a stand against them and going to court, and they're still looking into that, I guess, so it's, it's something I think that we should do in the future, because otherwise than that, it's, it's, Division Marine Fisheries have been trying to do this for the last five years, and they're not getting anywhere with Brockton, so, just to bring you up to date on that. Is there anything that town administrator has for a report?
Just one thing, I'd wanna reiterate that we have the recycling center open on Saturdays and Sundays through the month of November. Mr. Vlade reported to me today that Saturday, there was just a shade under three hundred cars that visited the recycling center, probably less than a third of that on Sunday, so I just wanna let the public know that the recycling center is open on both Saturday and Sunday through the month of November.
Awesome. Do we have anything to ask the selectmen? Any new business? Then there's some upcoming issues, there's gonna be on November 13th, there's a public hearing with the board of assessors on the fiscal year 18 tax classification hearing. On November 20th, there's a class one, class two taxi precious metals, metals license renewals. December 4th will be common picture of license renewals, there's forty-six of them that we have to approve. December 11th, there's thirty liquor licenses, eleven live entertainment, five Sunday, and amusement device, and five license renewals. On December 11th, since the selectmen went to break schedule, on December 18th, will be a discussion of the selectmen on the 2018 calendar, and we determine a quarterly meeting with the advisory committee. And is there a need to go into executive session?
Yes, sir, I'll take you three seconds.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board go into executive session under Mass. Chair Law's Chapter 38, Section 21, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, ask me DPW unit amendment one to the memorandum of agreement.
Second. And the chair does the prayer. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And I'll just, so that will conclude tonight's meeting on November 6th, and we're going into executive session, and we'll be coming back out, but there will be no need for a vote after we've announced, we'll only be coming out to the chairman for the select meeting. So have a good week, and we'll catch you next week, and thanks for listening.